Good afternoon, everyone. It is Tuesday, February ninth, two thousand and sixteen. This is the Fairmont Area School Board meeting. A roll call this evening as all members of our school board are present. Please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes from our last meeting, which was on January twenty-sixth?
I haven't. I'd make a motion to approve those minutes.
Thank you, Dan. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Nicole. I have a motion by Dan, a second by Nicole, to approve the January twenty-sixth, two thousand and sixteen school board meeting minutes as printed. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. And if you move to the agenda for this evening, you go to Board Committee Reports. SDCC did not meet due to the weather conditions, and that's moved to February fifteenth, so that will not, there will be no report, Board Committee reports. And then, under Other, due to some, three of the board members being absent, we are going to have to change the February twenty-third meeting, and we'll discuss that under Other Business. Anything else that needs to be added or changed to the agenda? If not, okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with those changes.
Thank you, Julie. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Nicole. So I have a motion by Julie, second by Nicole, to approve the February ninth, two thousand and sixteen school board meeting agenda as amend, or with the additions. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Right, we're going to move to Celebrations and School Community Reports, and we have three this evening. And the first one is the School Board Recognition Week, which is coming up, and Heidi Villanueva Shaloman is here to talk about that. Good evening.
First, I'd like to read a proclamation from our Mayor Randy Querring. Whereas, the City of Fairmont recognizes the importance of public education in our community, and whereas, the City of Fairmont appreciates the vital role played by those individuals who, as local school board members, establish policies to ensure an efficient, effective school system. And whereas, school board members serve as a voice that enables our community to preserve local management and control of our public schools. And whereas, school board members are charged with representing our local education interests to state and federal government and ensuring compliance with state and federal law. And whereas, school board members selflessly devote their knowledge, time, and talents as advocates for our schoolchildren. Whereas, local school board members are strong advocates for public education and reasonable for, responsible for communicating the needs of the school district to the public and the public's expectations to the district. Now therefore, be it resolved, that the City of Fairmont recognizes and salutes the members of the Fairmont Area School Board by proclaiming February fifteenth to the nineteenth, two thousand and sixteen, as School Board Recognition Week. Thank you. Now for the fun part. I'm here representing Education Minnesota, Education Minnesota, Fairmont. I was corrected earlier on that. We are here to present to you these gifts as a token of our appreciation. You will notice that these gifts may closely resemble cutting boards, but nay, they are not cutting boards. They, in reality, are serving boards. That Caitlin Martins, our elementary school librarian, has engraved for you. There's a cardinal on it, "Fairmont in Minnesota." We want to thank you for your dedication and service to the Fairmont Area Schools. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very nice.
Very clever, very nice little gift. So if anyone wants to come and look at those, we'll probably all have them in our offices or homes, so.
Yeah. Thank you very much, and thanks, Heidi, for reading the proclamation, and your not kind words. We appreciate it. And we, and I, on behalf of the board, I think we all serve because of the kids in our community, and our community, and how important it is that everybody gets an education and gets a chance. So we just appreciate all the teachers do, and we do this out of just our love for kids in our community, so, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next on our agenda is K-Pals Report, and Carrie Duhmeyer is here to talk about that. Good evening.
All right. It's been my night of presenting. I just got done presenting for technology at school, so I apologize. We had two evenings this year of our K-Pals, which is a night when we invite our kindergarten students, along with one adult, to come during the evening from five-thirty to seven, to enjoy a free meal, and then we host reading and math, different activities for them to kind of make and take, so things that they can do along with the regular curriculum that we have at school, for them to do at home. So, in the fall, we had, let's see, we have about a hundred and twenty-five students this year, around, approximately, I don't know the exact number. But we had RSVP'd for sixty kids to come, and only about thirty-five of them showed up in the fall. And then, just this last time in January, we had about RSVP'd for about forty, and only twenty-five of them came. So we were a little disappointed in the turnout, because it is a lot of time and effort that we volunteered to put into it. It's, I mean, the people that come thank us and really appreciate the stuff that we give them to take home, because it's a lot of manipulatives, hands-on things for them to do at home, and they kind of learn what we're learning at school as well. So, it's something that we're kind of wondering where we're going to go from here, because, you know, if we're not getting the turnout, can we do it a different way? How are we, you know, what are our next steps? So, something that we really enjoy doing, giving to the parents, but we're not getting quite back from it what we would really like to do, the amount of parents that we would like to see happen, so. Hopefully, I don't know if there's, you guys have any suggestions for that, but...
But if you're making a difference in the life of one kid, just, it's, that's a big deal. That's a very big deal, you know? I know it's disappointing, but just think of that, one little kid that...
That did benefit from it.
From all of that, yeah.
The lives you touched with it, and...
Oh, and they were very, I mean, they, the people that came, they've got to spend quali, you know, they got to spend quality time with that one parent, too, and that was a big thing. I mean, you could see them just, especially if they have siblings there, hey, I get mom to myself or dad to myself tonight, and so it's really interesting.
For some of them, too, though, it's, you know, maybe just a change, or just to understand what it all, you know, it might take some time before it really takes off, you know? I know you did it twice, you know, but it just, you know, they talk amongst themselves, talks amongst their playmates groups and stuff like that, the parents, the kids, they tell about what a great time they had, what, you know, a positive experience it was, you know? Hopefully, others will say, you know, but you can never, you never know, you know? Maybe it's the night of the week, maybe it's, you know, it's, there's so many other things...
We try to vary that, too, and I know this year it landed on the same, I don't know how it landed on the same night this year, but, you know, we try to vary those things, too.
Have you tried a survey to see what the parents preferred?
We do. We, well, not, not in the nights, but at the end of it, we get, hand out a survey and say, what would you like to see done? Did you, you know, is it beneficial, those kinds of things, and always positive feedback, so.
Perfect.
We think it's gone really well.
And when, at back-to-school conferences, or when they come in, is that when you talk about it, too, like, from the beginning, just kind of keep being inviting and that?
Yes, and there's a lot of information, the back-to-school conferences, so we go probably about in October, September, October, we start talking about it with them, so.
Yeah, I know, there's always a lot, especially if you're a kindergarten parent new, too, it's, it's a lot to take in.
Yeah. So, yeah, I mean, the people that, oh, yeah, one else thing we did, we used the school catering this year for it, and that went really well.
Nice.
It went very well. They had it all set up for us. We had the pet team, there are one or two members from the pet team able to help serve, so we were able to use that this year, and we really enjoyed that, so.
Yeah.
Made it easier on us, rather than scrambling after school to go different places to collect everything, so, it was good food, and, yeah.
Well, if we come up with ideas, or somebody makes a suggestion, or pet helps out with that, we'll let you know, so.
Sounds good, yeah. I mean, like I said, for the people that went, it was a, you know, they really enjoyed it, and they liked all the things that we gave them. We just want to reach out to more people, so.
Yeah.
But, yeah.
Yeah. I don't know how you do that.
It's a lot of work to do the one night, you know, that, you know, even, you know, staggering it, you know, two times, when you, you know, but you, you don't know if that'll get any more people, it's a lot of work, and appreciate the time and that, the effort that you have put into those, for those children.
And we did, for the manipulatives, I forgot to mention this, we got it through a grant, through Southern, through, is it Smith?
Smith.
Yeah.
Southern Minnesota Foundation.
Yep. So, that was nice, that's, we have that stuff paid for through that way.
All right. Well, good job, and we'll just keep working at it, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next on the agenda, we have the Counselors' Report, and Scott Gertis and Jenny Schwiger are here, and they have a lot of information to tell us about. Good evening.
Good evening, Board. Appreciate this opportunity to kind of give a State of the Guidance Office report again this year. Hopefully, all of you have had a handout or given a handout before the meeting. I want you to know upfront that we are absolutely not going to go through every single slide that you're seeing today. A few of, a few of you on the Board have seen us back in two thousand and fourteen, so we're using a similar format. But I do want the Board to know that this very much is a reference, and truly a concrete responsibility list that both Jenny and I, and along with Mary Granheim, our Administrative Assistant, perform each and every year for the, for the school district. So we're not going to hit every slide. I would like to call to the Board's attention, and hopefully you're able to see this, but in the bottom right-hand corner, this is actually a PowerPoint, Jenny and I will reference some of the slides or the page numbers, just some things that we'd like to highlight for the Board this time around. I would just simply start on Slide number two. We're going to give a, just really, we do have an agenda this evening. Jenny's going to talk very briefly about our counseling responsibilities. Some of them have changed in the last couple of years, and highlight a school intern that we have, and then just some month-by-month blow in terms of what Jenny and I are responsible for professionally, not only in the school building, but also locally, and in some cases, we do have some regional responsibilities each and every year in our duties for the school system. And then we'll close with you tonight by just sharing some data mining, or some fast facts that we've collected through our experiences this year professionally in the Guidance Office. So that'll be our template for you, and I promise we're not going to go through each and every slide, but I do feel like this will be a very good reference for you, especially new Board members, to find out exactly what Jenny and I do during the course of the school year. And when we conclude, we'll be more than happy to try to field any questions that you may have for us. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to my professional partner here, Jenny Schwiger.
Okay, so, again, as Scott said, thank you for giving us this opportunity to speak again this year. So the role of the school counselor truly has evolved over, you know, the many years that school counselors have been in schools. Originally, the focus was on vocational guidance only, okay? So that's how counselors were trained. School counselors are now trained to work in three domains of counseling, and that would be in the academic, career, and personal, social areas. So our goal overall as school counselors is to meet the needs of the, of the students so that they can be successful in school and reach their full potential. The school counseling role can also vary just from school to school, so, again, we do appreciate the opportunity to share information about our specific roles and responsibilities, just to inform you who we are and what we do here at Fairmont. Along with the role changing from school to school, there is definitely not a typical day in the world of a school counselor. We will share our list of responsibilities, but in all honesty, honesty, no one day looks the same. We may have a plan for the day, but a student crisis can take us on a quick detour that can kind of change how our day will look. Our positions can be challenging, but overall, we very much enjoy the variety that each day brings and what we do each and every day. Life is never dull in the, in the counseling world, but we do our best to meet the students with where they're at on that present day. So at this time, if you'd like to turn to the last three pages of your packet, and those three pages provide a comprehensive list of all those essential duties and counseling responsibilities. Scott and I review this list every year. We just have done that recently, before we got ready for this presentation today. We've shared this information with the Board in the past, but, again, are appreciating the opportunity to revisit them and share with the Board and also our new Board members. Appendix A at the back identifies the counseling responsibilities for both Scott and myself. Appendix B, which is the next page, would be those duties that are specific to things that Scott does throughout the school year. And then the last page would be Appendix C, and that's the list of responsibilities that, that I have throughout the school year, specific to me. As Scott shared, we will not take time to go through each item, but wanted you to have a copy to refer to, and just have an idea of what we do throughout the school year. So as we are looking at the current responsibilities, I think this is a good time to share some information about our counseling intern this year. We have been extremely fortunate to have Missy Lubinow join our counseling team throughout this entire school year. Slide number six of your handout provides some information about Ms. Lubinow, and some of her background, and what's to come for her. Missy is a two thousand and ten Fairmont High School graduate. She graduated from Winona State University in, with a bachelor's degree in psychology in two thousand and fourteen. And then she will graduate this May with a master's degree in professional K through twelve school counseling, and that'll be from MSU Mankato. Missy very much wanted to be here tonight, but Tuesday nights is a class night for her as she's finishing up her schoolwork. She has been an additional support in truly all three domains of school counseling. From the first day, and this is the honest truth, she's been eager to learn and to get into the trenches, just very confident and wanting to just soak in everything that she can in the counseling world. She's definitely been a wonderful addition to our counseling department, and has helped our school counseling area run smoothly. Part of Missy's internship this year, she asked that I share this with the Board, she will be completing a needs assessment, and Missy has a particular interest in researching mental health, specifically in the area of eating disorders. She's been collecting data from the Minnesota Student Surveys from two thousand and ten and two thousand and thirteen for the Fairmont District and statewide. And I believe if it still works the way it worked when I was getting my graduate degree, at the end of her term, so this May, they will do a presentation or a colloquium at MSU Mankato where she'll present her findings and talk about her research that she has collected. So with that being said, we just really, again, have genuinely enjoyed having her as part of our team, and look forward to having her with us for as long as she'll, she'll stay with us. It'll likely be about the second week of May. Okay, so Slide number eight of your packet provides some information about an addition to our counseling responsibilities for this year. We, again, this year implemented a wellness group. This was an idea that really formed last year during our student support PLC work. Throughout our group and our conversations, we often talked about the number of students that we would see presenting in the health center, often with stress-related health conditions, we would say. And attendance was also often a concern for these students. We thought it would be helpful to hold a group that would teach skills and strategies that would help those students to cope with their thoughts, their feelings, their, kind of those somatic complaints that they're experiencing, so that they can remain in school and work through those difficulties and stressors that are coming to the forefront for them. So Michelle Thompson, Nancy Backer, Missy Lubinow, and myself did research and gathered resources, attended some workshops, and helped to develop a group. We ran a six-week group during second quarter and covered the topics that are listed on Slide eight. So we talked about how to define stress, what are the signs and symptoms, and some of the activities we did is we worked with them on mindfulness. We had them develop a toolbox, and, and in that toolbox, we would add things each session for coping strategies and things that they could turn to, to help them day-to-day. Talked about positive self-talk, thinking errors, and we ended with gratitude in a summary. Missy, again, played a big role in helping us get organized and getting the group sessions put together. The next two slides, so number nine and number ten, identify some of the data that we collected at our first group meeting and then our final group meeting. We had all the students complete a survey to collect some data. So Slide number nine shows a few of the questions that we asked our students, and then the answers that we collected. As you can see, the students in this group indicated an average score of four point one on a one-to-five scale of how much stress they are experiencing. They also indicated that, on average, they scored about a two-point-four on a one-to-five scale of how helpful their current strategies are in working to alleviate stress. So this was that initial pre-evaluation survey. Slide ten gives the average scores for questions asked on the survey conducted at the final session. Feedback from the group overall was very positive. Students indicated that they are very likely to use new skills and strategies that they learned in our group to help cope in times of stress. Students also showed a two-point-two gain in how helpful the skills and strategies they are currently using are helping to alleviate the stress. Students' feedback also indicated that things that they would change about the group is that they would have more meetings, and they would want to meet for longer periods of time.
When did they meet?
It was during the school day, and then we alternated class periods.
Okay.
We avoided the lunch hours, just because they would have different lunch, because we had students from seventh up to, I think, eleventh, twelfth grade. We had all grade levels there attending. So, very positive reports. There were some difficulties with the group, and that's an important one to note, is that these are students that have experienced some attendance problems in the past, so now we're pulling them from class time to have these meetings. But we tried to reduce the amount of issue by alternating, alternating those class periods the best we could.
But if they don't have skills, or the coping mechanisms for classroom, putting them back in is not, it doesn't, it's just a big cycle.
Yeah, for sure. And so we actually, we've had those students in now since the group, and they are, you know, practicing some of these strategies and have found them helpful. And we do our best to, when they do meet with us and come out of class, to try to do it in about ten minutes, you know, let's, let's work through some of these, and let's get you, you know, ready to go back to class. So we definitely are seeing some positive effects of that. And one of the challenges also is just finding the time to have that group. There was one group in particular, all four of us were supposed to be helping facilitate the group, and we ended up with just one of us in the group, because the three others had been pulled away for a number of different things, just, you know, those things that happened day-to-day. So, but overall, you know, positive, and it was nice to have four of us that all knew what we were doing, so if one of us did have to step out, the other person could step in and lead, so. Okay, so that was our wellness group, one of the things we added. Slides eleven through twelve provide a copy of our counseling calendar. This is all organized by month, and as Scott shared, again, we will not take time to go through each and every one of these, but just thought it'd be helpful for, for you as a Board to see, what are the large events or the things that keep us busy throughout this, the school year? So again, you can take time to look through, again, Slides eleven through twenty-four. So moving on, Scott now is going to talk about a couple of the large events that take place in February. One has happened, and one will be coming up next week. He'll also talk about some of the upcoming events for the rest of the school year.
Thank you, Jenny. Just a note about having counseling interns, I haven't been able to figure out over the years why MSU Mankato keeps contacting us to have young professionals come to Fairmont High School, but they keep sending those, those students to us. And not always like Missy is homegrown, not always are the students and interns that come to us seeking that advanced master's degree from Fairmont. So we feel very fortunate, for whatever reason, that MSU Mankato has reached out to us in our department to actually host counseling interns. And if I'm not mistaken, we may have not only one, but maybe two school counseling interns next year. So it's a responsibility that we, that we do enjoy, and we've had multiple over the years, and, and honestly, I think we, we very much feel like we owe it to the profession and the next generation of school counselors to maybe show them how we do our business here at Fairmont Area Schools, and then use those skills, and maybe see the skills that Jenny and I demonstrate, apply them to their own profession when they go out and get their jobs. So the interns keep coming, and we haven't been able to say no yet, but it has been something that we positively have enjoyed over the years.
And I bet they bring some new ideas and things, too, because they're in the age group, other generation than some of us, and, you know, they look, view the world differently than we do, and it's nice to have somebody to talk to about that.
Absolutely. Diane, I could not agree with you more. It, it helps gain perspective about the next generation of not only college students and professionals, but for us to continue to be able to relate to younger people, you know, as we, we move into our careers. And in a lot of ways, I think it helps keep Jenny and I professionally young as well. So yes, we are open always to fresh ideas, new concepts, new technologies that, that are out there as interns come to us. So absolutely wonderful. Very quickly, Board, if I may, I'm going to highlight here some current happenings that we've got going in, going on in the Guidance Office, and if you'd like to fast-forward the bottom right-hand corner, Slide number twenty-five. And again, this will be very informational, and I'll try to work relatively quickly here. Last Monday, February first, in the High School Commons, we were fortunate enough to have Jane Dins, who's the Director of Financial Aid at South Central College, come to us and drive down from Mankato to Fairmont again this year to, to host our annual financial aid night. And I know many of you have sent students through college, or in college, or going to college, or will have students going to college in the very near future, but in short, that meeting is regarding the good old FAFSA form, the Free Application for Federal Student Aid, that both the state and federal governments use to determine financial aid eligibility as students are leaving Fairmont High School and going on to a post-secondary career. When I say college, that means either a two-year or four-year career. One takeaway that I will be sharing here next week with our current junior class that I have not seen yet as a school counselor, and probably is going to be new for you as Board members, but the federal government is going to what they're calling a prior, prior year financial aid form, or tax form. So instead of going by last year's tax returns, two thousand and fifteen, obviously, starting next year, the federal government are going to use for students and families the previous two years of tax returns. Now, they don't share with us the formula or how that's going to work, but my sense from Jane Dins is that the government is now going to look at the income and assets from families over two years, and then maybe balance or average those numbers to give maybe a quote-unquote "more realistic" financial aid status of the families. So, one little new nuance for us in the Guidance Office as we're starting to talk about financial aid here for our students, and probably more for, for you guys as parents, and, and for our parents of our students, is that now that the government is going to go to what they're calling a prior, prior year tax return in, in establishing financial aid. With that, very quickly, Slide number twenty-six. Next Thursday, February eighteenth, our current juniors, we're going to do another annual college planning night. Again, when I say college, I'm referring to two- and four-year colleges. This is something that we've done in the Guidance Office in person for well over thirty years, so this actually goes beyond Jenny and I's time here at Fairmont High School. Just very quickly, we'll, we'll hit with parents of this year's junior class, some post-secondary planning. Obviously, we're going to touch on financial aid, visiting colleges, our procedures to make that happen, and how to go about and make that happen, ACT testing, and then just general, generally about the college application process. Last year, we had over one hundred and thirty students and parents attend that, that meeting, so it will be next Thursday. And the only reason I highlight that for the Board, this is something that we have done in the Guidance Office for decades, and very simply, as long as parents and students keep showing up and find value in some career and, in college readiness, we're going to go ahead and do a junior planning, planning day, so that will be, be coming up.
Is that open to other schools, too, or just Fairmont kids?
You know, we do it primarily for Fairmont, Fairmont students. Others, other schools, I don't want to speak for them directly, but I'm guessing other counselors in the area would, would have a, a similar night. But we have had families from outside of our, our district that have come and felt very welcome in, in attending that event, and I would have no problem, and Mrs. Schwiger would have no problem if that, that happened. But the short answer would, would be no, we don't promote it, at least right now, Diane, outside of our, our district. So those numbers are, are pretty much our, our kids and our, our parents. Very quickly, Slide number twenty-seven, in March, Mrs. Very quickly, slide number 27, in March, Mrs. Schwiger and I will go out into the classrooms. Mrs. Schwiger takes current grades eight, eight and nine. I do registration for current grades nine and 10, so next year's juniors and seniors. And we go through our registration process. There's about a three-week window in terms of actual work that needs to be done and I'll try to highlight that very quickly. Each one of our grade levels have about five sections of students. So Mrs. Schwiger and I go in to the classroom and take an entire class period, talk about the graduation requirements once again, the required courses that are needed the next year in their, in their schooling and then any new course offerings that we may be, be offering here for the upcoming school year. And I have gotten permission to say this, I, I would like to also just share that depending on student numbers and enrollment for next year, we're potentially going to be offering five new courses at the high school. And I say potentially depending on student enrollment. And I'll just highlight those quickly. We're looking to offer an advanced placement computer science class. We're also looking to offer two college in the schools, again, very quickly CIS classes. Students not only get high school credit, but they get college credit from Minnesota West Community and Tech, Technical College. And the beautiful caveat to saying that is that there is no charge at the moment for our students or to their families to take these college classes. So they're for free for our Fairmont area students and their families. A CIS anatomy class, a CIS genetics class, that's number three. Mrs. Tonder has expressed interest in a cadet teaching class. And as we all know, there's a relatively or maybe even a significant teacher shortage, not only here but across the state. And Mrs. Tonder is very much earmarking current high school students that may have an interest, an interest in teaching. And she plans to maybe take them out, I don't want to speak entirely for her, but to take them out after some, some training and some classroom presentations out into the elementary and get some real-world experience for, for our high school students, maybe with kids at the elementary or upper levels. And that's, looks like it's going to be themed cadet teaching. And then also looking to potentially add a college in the schools and an advanced placement world history class. So this is kind of exciting for me. I know hopefully that doesn't sound too dull, but I very much enjoy being able to, to share with the board and, and share with our students and families some potential new, new course offerings. So hopefully that, that comes across appropriately. Very quickly, I would highlight, so just some quick data mining pieces. And this is very unusual and I, I don't have an explanation for this one, but slide number 30, since last May, Mrs. Schwiger and I document how many new students we, we register and sign up for classes in our district. And I won't go into great elaboration here, but I would just say it probably takes between two and a half hours and three hours of actual time from when a student and family presents to Mrs. Grandheim in the guidance office to complete all the information that, that we need to get them enrolled into our system, to do an academic history of transcripts from previous schools, to give a building tour, because we want all of our students to feel welcome and get accustomed a little bit to what our building looks like and how you, how you move through the day here. And we also have done a shadow day for years for many, many students. So if we have a brand-new student in the district, we'll find a student that's currently at FHS, that's in good academic standing, has a positive social group involved in, in school and hopefully has similar likes as the new students, as the new student. And we actually have our new student shadow with our current or existing student for a day before they start into their own class, their own classes. And, and that's a step that we saw a need for several years ago or many years ago. And it's really been become, really become a part of our orientation process for brand-new students in our district to take a day to get to know at least one person and then their student host for the day will introduce them to their friends, they sit together at lunch and, and hopefully, you know, a day isn't a long period of time, but to give them a transition day to feel welcome in our building before the new student actually starts their own class schedule. So the quick takeaway is since last May, Jenny and I have enrolled 76 new students into our district. And ironically, that's typically a number that we will do at the end of the school year. And I can't explain the influx into our district, but I, I very much would like to suggest that I think we've got a lot of very good things happening here in our district and hopefully we're very attractive to students and families that are, that are coming and looking at Fairmont High School. And ironically enough, you're going to think I planned this, but I didn't. But as I walked into the office today and got settled in after the snow day, we had a family that presented and walked into our office and we'll be enrolling two more students tomorrow from Des Moines, Iowa. And I don't have any further information right now, but you can actually add two more to that number starting tomorrow. So it's kind of a, you know, as I look at this in perspective, it's kind of a new experience that, that Jenny and I are going through right now. The number of, not the total number of students that we're enrolling, because I think it's even going to grow as a school year continues, but we're at a number right now that what we would typically do an entire calendar school year. So I would just highlight that just for a moment. And then very briefly, board, slides 31 and 32, I just want to continue to just say in general that we so support, are supportive, feel supported from administration in the school board. Our students are having more and more complex needs, from out-of-home placements, from mental health placements, from chemical health placements. We work directly with law enforcement in some circumstances and situations to working with human services. And we're actually seeing a few more homeless students and to try to help kids that are coming to us. And there are lots of reasons and it's probably longer than this presentation to have this dialogue, but really genuinely do not have a caring adult to go home to. And it, it's really even sad for me to report that to you as a board and in this report. But I also think it's very good for you to know is this is really a current reality right here and right now in our community. So Jenny and I have worked this year and even this week with the entities that I, that I have, have just mentioned. And we just want you to know that we continue to, to, to feel the support from above us in meeting the social, emotional and mental health needs as well as the academic needs for the kids that we, we serve here in, in District 2752. I did not mean to end on a somber note by any stretch of the imagination, yet with that said, I think there's some perspective here to share with really our current reality with some of our students and their very complex needs. So with that, I, we very much thank you for the time this evening. We would be more than happy to field any or all questions that you may have in any one of those domains or just anything in general. So thank you.
Thanks for the report. I have spent some time with Jenny and Scott in the last week in attendance appeals and at the student support team. And the kids that are having mental health and family issues and homeless issues, they're not slipping through the cracks. These people and the administration and there's, and the teachers at school know who these kids are and try to do interventions and help them. We have a little clothing store supply when kids don't have, are homeless and don't have anything to wear. We have supplies of those, we have food supplies. We let them take showers. It's just amazing that these kids, you know, someone's got to care about them and Scott and Jenny are two of them and Michelle Thompson and Nancy Becker and Kim Ness and Andy Tradeall, they're all very aware of these kids and we're very fortunate to have such caring people, or the teachers too, that care about these kids. And so they're not slipping through, I mean, we do what we can for them in the time we have, but they go back to not-so-good circumstances and that's what's sad, you know? Yeah, we can help them all we want. So we appreciate all that you do for that and for those kids too.
Diane, where do the supplies for the, those resources come from? Clothing, food, school supplies?
Various donations from.
But does the community even, are they even aware that there's that need that?
I think Michelle Thompson does a lot of work with that. I don't know exactly what her plan is, but.
Right, and I don't know for sure how she does outreach, but I know she talked with the group, the child study group here in Fairmont and that's where a lot of the donations began. And so we, we received more donations than we had room for. So now Kim has provided us some space to, to keep the clothes and, and the school supplies. So, I mean, that was just one organization. I think Amy Becker also through her efforts at the elementary school coordinates with Michelle to different, you know, outreach.
So if someone in the community had donations, I mean, who would be a contact person?
I guess I'd probably start with Michelle Thompson or Amy Becker.
Okay.
Yep. And then.
The social workers.
The social workers and they seem to be the one that are, that are coordinating it and then informing us as other support staff where we can go to get those materials and, and basic needs.
Yeah, good question though, thank you.
Another question regarding, I mean, you guys have an incredibly difficult job and, and it's, the, the environment, the college environment, the, the job environment the kids are, are going into is always changing. Do we have any way of, of getting feedback from recent graduates to find out if we're adequately preparing them, if we're missing anything? I mean, how do we keep real-time assessment of, of what their needs are?
Absolutely, that's, that's a very good question in terms of student feedback. Superintendent Brown is actually engaging in a student survey that I believe is going to take place this spring to actually track our students when they graduate, probably for five or 10 years after, after they leave our hallowed halls at Fairmont High School. To answer your question, before I came on board here at Fairmont, there was a time before I came where the school reached out, typically it was through the guidance office is my understanding, to survey parents and, and students after they graduated. As you can imagine, over time, there probably wasn't a high degree of feedback, so that piece seemed to die, to die down. But I think the, the mechanism of a current student survey that may be coming forth here in our district and maybe even our building specifically, to elicit that feedback from our current, current students and, and families, once they leave Fairmont High School, absolutely, I think would be, be very much from a data-driven point of view to, to see what our, what our kids and families are, are doing after they graduate, what was their perspective of their experience, I'll just speak for our building and the junior, senior high school. And then where do our kids end up five years down the, down the line? Are they graduating from high school? Are they finding gainful employment? You know, are they even finding jobs? And I think those all Rufus are very key questions that I think we need to, to ask as a district to get feedback as a system so we can even maybe more clearly define our roles and how we can be helpful in the, in the guidance office. So I believe a school survey is going to be on deck here in the very near future if, if my understanding is correct. So we'll be looking for it soon.
Okay, very good.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions for Mr. Gertis or Mr. Schwiger? Okay, I don't know where. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, you're just going down there. Okay, next on our agenda is superintendent's report and calendar and you left your chair. I didn't know what was happening.
I did, well, I thought I'd do something different and be down here tonight. First of all, the school calendar, if you take out your pink sheet and just change the first one, we've rescheduled the SDCC meeting for Monday, February 15th and that will be held in the William Budroom at 3:45. And we have asked the three members of the staff welfare committee to attend that meeting. We're going to be discussing potential future changes in the QCOM plan with the SDC members. And then the CER committee is going to meet Thursday and at the very bottom of the calendar, February 23, we're looking at canceling that meeting, the February 23rd school board meeting. I want to just focus your attention a little bit on the enrollment report and Scott and Jenny did a very nice job talking about the number of students. We've seen a very stable number of student enrollments this year at the high schools, particularly many times at the semester time, we see a lot of students leaving and we did not see that this year. And if you look at the enrollment report, we're up a couple of students at the high school, we're up to 805 at the high school, 898 at the elementary. And as Scott mentioned, it looks like we're going to have two more folks from the great state of Iowa joining us. So we're sure they're going to, we're sure they're going to be wonderful students coming from that southern state of Iowa. Another new thing, the, Jim Davis and I, on Friday, we're going to start going into the sixth grade classrooms. We'll be spending three days with the sixth graders over the next two weeks to implement the Minnesota Career Information System junior version. And the students will actually be going in and creating and implementing an interest inventory. They'll be doing three different interest inventories and that will start their profile that they'll use to transfer into the high school next year when they go into the Minnesota Career Information System at the high school. And we're actually going to start that in the sixth grade and so that will be something that we'll implement starting on Friday. Tomorrow at noon, the Southern Plains superintendents, there are five of us, six of us now, and we're going to be meeting with Senator Julie Rosen from this area. We're going to be meeting at the Southern Plains office to talk about some of the legislation ideas that we may have for her to consider in the upcoming session. They're going to start meeting in March and this is a good time for local legislators to meet with superintendents. We really do appreciate that. About a month ago, the regional superintendents met with Representative Bob Gunther and other state representatives in the region in Mankato. But tomorrow, we'll meet with Senator Rosen. So that should be good. And as Scott mentioned, the grad survey, we are, we actually purchased the service, the service this year. So at the end of April or beginning of May, we're going to survey all of our senior students that are graduating. They'll be doing a graduation survey. And then every, in two years from that time, they'll, this company will contact those students again and they'll do a two-year follow-up. And then five years after they graduate, they'll do a five-year follow-up. And, and the idea behind that is that we'll try to track exactly what's happening to our students, to our graduates and where they're, where they're going and what are they doing. I, I just heard a report the other day that 53% of students that are, have college degrees, recent college degrees are either unemployed or underemployed. And so today I had the opportunity, I went over to Jackson for about an hour or two to visit the John Deere dealership and I took a tour of their facility. And it's amazing the job opportunities we have that are so close to us. They're looking for individuals to go into the maintenance area and, and working with John Deere equipment, it's not just, you know, working on engines, it's really high-tech stuff. They're really doing a lot of, a lot of technology. So it was really interesting to take a tour of that and they're very interested in the programs that we have here. And I want to just make a comment too, we do have a very caring faculty and support staff at this community and our community is very fortunate to have the school board that we have. That's why I came down here tonight. I do have certificates for each of the board members. And I want to point out that one of the unique things of, of school boards in this country is that we do have elected school boards that really, you know, there's an old saying in politics, that politics is local, all politics is local. And decisions that are really important to people, whether it's at the city council level or the county commissioner level or the school board level, they're done by local folks that are elected, that live in this community, that have a vested interest in the future of this community. And school board members are so important. And we're fortunate, I got to tell you, I think this community is very fortunate to have the school board that we have. I've been involved in the school business for over 40 years, been an administrator now for 21. And when I go to different superintendent conferences and different school board conferences, not every school is as fortunate as we are. We have a school board that works very hard, they work very closely together, they're very respectful for each other and you don't see that in every community and we're fortunate to have that here. I just want to point out that one thing that school, one thing that our community may not understand about school boards, you know, we meet twice a, twice a month and we meet for usually an hour, sometimes an hour and a half. And that's only the minuscule amount of time that school board members invest. School board members are very busy all throughout the month. They visit classrooms, they visit sporting events, they go to musicals, they go to concerts. But more importantly, we do a lot of our work in the back rooms, I should say, and they're open by the way, they're not secret, but we have committee work. And I'll just highlight some of the committees that we have. We have the staff welfare committee, which is basically the personnel committee. And the personnel committee is in charge of hiring and, and doing the staffing levels. It is involved in the contract negotiations for the teachers and the custodians and the administrative assistants. It makes, does the contracts, negotiations for the bus company and the food service program. It's a. It's a very, very important committee. The other big committee that we have is the Operations Committee, and the Operations Committee works with the building and plant, the equipment part, whether it's technology purchases, whether it is the resurfacing of the track, or resurfacing of the tennis courts, or the parking lots, the roofs, the things that keep the, the buildings and the equipment together. And we have the Curriculum Committee, which meets periodically to look at what classes our students should be required to take, and what classes we should be offering as electives. We have a Policy Committee, which we're going to start up again in the next few weeks, because we have a number of policies to go through. There are a couple hundred policies that the School Board Association has in the state of Minnesota, and they recommend that we go through these policies at least every three years, and we're going to start that policy work again. And we also have the CER folks to meet periodically, monthly, and we just have a lot of meetings that go on. And I think the community, sometimes they look at a school board, they think, jeez, that's an easy job, they only meet two hours a month, when in fact, school board members meet hundreds of hours throughout the year. And the most important thing, I think, for school board members is that you're the local ears of the community, regardless of where you are, whether you're at church, whether you're at, at a grocery store, at a sporting event, I'm sure you have people sitting by you and talking to you about the school, and giving you some ideas, and sharing concerns that they have. And that's what representative democracy is all about. It's about local folks being elected to represent your community for the best interests of our kids. And so I want to thank you all for being members of the board, and I do have a certificate for each of you.
Thank you. It's kind of nice to get all these fun little things here, you know?
The average of this, the value of this and the average of this, the two plus the five dollars.
Oh, yeah, that's right, too, we can accept gifts, but we appreciate the recognition. You know, we're not doing it for that, we're doing it because we like kids and we like our community, and that's what we're, we wanted to serve, and so that's why, that's why I ran for the board, and I, I've enjoyed my, I've been on since 2008, and I've enjoyed every minute of it. And, you know, there are tough decisions to make, but we do it cooperatively, we talk it out. I don't think I've ever seen, and I've never been in a meeting that's been angry, or crying, or kicking, or anything, so I just appreciate all that, yeah. It's, it's, it's very professional, and there's always two sides to every story. There's always two sides, so we have to listen to everything, so appreciate that. Anyone else?
I appreciate the recognition as well, and I, I agree with you, Diane. You know, we do this for the kids, and how I look at it too, it's an investment in our future, but not, you know, not only our future, but, but our children's future, but our children will be, you know, taking care, making these decisions for us. So it's our responsibility to get those children to that ability to take over jobs. You know, we talked about counseling, talked about, you know, coming into the teachers and, and replacing our teaching staff and all that, you know, it's just, it's just that circle of life that needs to go around, but, you know, it's that investment, it's not just for even Fairmont schools, it's, it's for all the kids in the community, our surrounding districts and that as well. But, you know, what we can provide for them will help them to be better citizens, help them to be the better caretakers of our lives, because someday, we won't be able to do this decision-making stuff, we'll leave it up to that next generation to do it. But, like I said, it's an investment, so we're spending it wisely.
And to be better moms and dads, too, you know, just parenting, and all, just all the things that go into becoming an adult, so. All right, so thank you very much for the recognition. All right, we'll move to financial business, we have a donation, Diane?
Yes, fine, the donation in Appendix A, and I would introduce the following resolution and move for its adoption. Whereas, the harvesting of corn planted by WFS on school district property yielded a donation of $5,404.26, whereas Myron Moeller donated his time to harvest the corn. Be it resolved by the Fairmont Area School Board to gratefully accept this gift.
Thank you, Dan, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Nicole. So I have Dan introducing the resolution and Nicole with the second, and so we have to voice vote on this. So Danielle?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, Nicole?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Rufus?
Aye.
The resolution is adopted, and we thank WFS and Myron Moeller for their donation, and the harvest and the work to the, for the egg program.
And when you include the, the donation previously for the soybeans, that is just shy of $10,000, is what it ended up being this year.
All right, very good. Thanks, Dan. Now we'll move to financial reports and bills, and Sue Nelson, our business manager is here this evening, good evening.
Good evening. Tonight on the agenda, we have the approval of the January 2016 Treasurers Report, wire transfers, that should be January 22nd through February 3rd, and the payment of the February 9th bills. So beginning with the January 2016 Treasurers Report, or Cash Balance Report, you have a listing there that shows by fund and each different account within each fund, and what the end-of-the-month cash balance is. Then on the flip side of that, at the top, we have our expenditure report for January 2016. So on the left, we have our different funds, and then we have our current school year budget that the board has approved, and the budget's $23,441,000. Our monthly expenditures in January were $3,648,000. The largest was in debt service. When we pay our debt service bills, we pay those twice a year, and those payments are due prior to the first of February, so those were made in, in January, and then we also pay prior to the first of August, so they're paid in July. Then we have our year-to-date expenditures, which are $11,764,000. So overall, we have spent 50% of our budget. Looking in the general fund, we're at 43% of the budget, and then I kind of look at that to see if it makes sense. Well, for teachers, their pay starts in September, and this includes their January pay, so that's 42% of their pay, so we're at 43% of budget spent, so that looks good. For our 12-month staff, they're at 58% of their pay. So just kind of look at that and, and ask myself if that makes sense. And then looking at debt service, we're at just about 100% spent there. And then going down to the transfers and wires from January 22nd to February 3rd, and we have wires and transfers for that January payroll. And then on the bottom, our payroll dispersments for the month of January, total $927,000. Do you have any questions? Then I can move to the checks dated today, February 9th, just a couple to bring to your attention. Check number 58057, made out to CDW Government. That is ordering laptops and things like that, using our Pi and Hunt grant dollars. A few meetings ago, the board approved those grant dollars, and so their, their products are being ordered and received. Check number 58070, made out to Luther College. This is for 10 students who will be attending the Dorian Band Festival on February 28th and 29th, and this is their registration. And then check number 58081, made out to Region 2AA, and this is for the gate receipts for the girls' hockey section game that we hosted here on February 3rd. So once that gate receipts are collected, because it's, we're hosting it, we forward those gate receipts on to the, to the region. Okay? Any questions on any of the checks in the register? Julie and I did meet prior to the board meeting to review things.
If there are no questions, I then would move to approve the January 2016 Treasurers Report, wire transfers for January 22nd, 2016, to February 3rd, 2016, and payment of the Jan, the February 9th, 2016 bills.
Thank you, Julie, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Rufus. So I have a motion by Julie, second by Rufus, to approve the treasures and financial reports as presented. Any further discussion or questions for Sue or Julie on the report? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries, thank you, Sue. All right, old business, we have nothing under old business listed on our agendas. We'll move to new business, and I'm going to have Superintendent Brown talk about the budget resolution process before we run that.
Sure, thanks, Diane. Every year about this time, school boards are asked to pass a resolution, just in case they have to make any budget reductions. And so, this is worded a little differently than passed resolutions, in that it states that, due to the financial condition of the school district, that we may need to reduce expenditures. At this point, and looking down the road, and looking at the stability of our student body, and looking at the fund balance that we have, we do not expect to make any reductions. However, in this day and age, we have to be cautious and be ready to make some reductions in case we have to by the end of the school year. So this is kind of a pro forma resolution that we're asking the board to approve tonight, but I want to make it very clear to the faculty, staff, and the community that at this point, we don't expect any reductions need to be made.
So just a formality, so, for, to be able to operate in a responsible manner is what we need to do this for, so. Well, I will introduce a resolution and move its adoption. The resolution directing the administration to make recommendations for reductions in programs and positions, and reasons for those recommendations for the 2016-2017 school year. Is there a second for that?
Second.
Thank you, Rufus. So, any further discussion on this resolution? Before we vote? All right, then we'll vote, Danielle?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, Nicole?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Rufus?
Aye.
The resolution is adopted, thank you. All right, next on our agenda is we have a memorandum of understanding to talk about, Rufus?
The Staff Welfare Committee reviewed and approved the enclosed memorandum of understanding for Bob Millet to retire at the end of the 15-16 school year. Bob has indicated his intention of retiring, and in order to make sure that he's not penalized in terms of insurance, and that we have enough time to replace that position before the end of, next, before, before the beginning of next year, that's the purpose of the resolution. So I would therefore make a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding relating to the retirement for Bob Millet.
Thank you, Rufus, is there a second? I'll second it. So the motion was offered by Rufus and a second by Diane to approve the memorandum of understanding related to the retirement of Bob Millet in Appendix C. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries, thank you. And then, no personnel items this month? And then how about committee reports? We have nothing, but we do need to discuss on the February 23rd board meeting. Danielle is not able to attend, I'm not able to attend, and Julie's not able to attend, therefore we don't have a quorum. We need four members of the board to hand a quorum. So I will offer a motion to cancel the February 23rd school board meeting, and I further move that if there becomes business necessary, that we would implement our procedures to have the notification in three days, and then have an emergency board meeting. So is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Julie. Is there any further discussion on that?
So the next meeting would be March 8th, then? Is that what we're looking at?
Yes.
Any other questions or comments? All right, if not, then all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries, so no meeting on February 23rd? Anything else that needs to come before the board? Oh, I do have one, Mr. Murphy's Celebration of Life is coming up on February 20th, which is Saturday, a couple Saturdays, do you know the time?
It's in the, it's in the obituaries, but in the website.
Yeah, I wasn't sure of the time, but it's going to be at school?
At the high school.
At the high school, in the gymnasium, so if anyone's interested in attending, that will, that's where it's at.
11 to 1?
11 till 1, so.
Saturday, February 20th.
Yep, yep, in the high school gym, so.
Diane, is the survey still open?
Yes.
Okay, so I'd just like to remind everyone that the, the survey for, for parents is available for, is it through?
Through, through the rest of this week.
Yeah, through this, so if you're a parent, or if you know a parent, encourage them to, to, to do the survey, we, we need your feedback.
So did you, they get an email with the link to it?
Yeah, that's, that's, we get an email, and then you just click on the link, and it'll take you right to all the questions.
Yeah, it's a quick, quick survey.
It didn't take you very long to do it?
Five minutes.
Okay, all right. I'm a parent, but not of a student, so I didn't get it.
Didn't get it either. Now, Mr. Murphy, I just pulled up the website, visitations 4 to 8 on the 19th, and the memorial service is at 11 o'clock on the 20th.
Okay, all right.
That's what the website says.
All right. All right, anything else that needs to come to the board?
Can I just ask Joe, or anybody who would know, I had a couple people ask me, when it comes to the recent snow days, or do we have any time that we have to make up because of that at this point?
Contractually, the teachers have to make up their days because they are scheduled to work so many days. And so in the past, what we've done, right now, we've had, what, two, three snow days?
Three snow days.
And one early out and one late start. The, the students, however, the state statute has changed a few years ago, students have to be in session so many minutes, and we have enough extra minutes built in the schedule at both the elementary and the high school, that the students at this point will not have to make up any time. And, but the teachers will have to make up those three days at the end of the school year. And we, we still have plenty of days built in.
And that's pending on what the, how the rest of the winter season goes.
February and March, we're just getting started in February.
That's what I was leaning towards, yeah. So at this point, we don't have, the students don't have to make up any time, but if we get, you know, three, four, or five more days, then they may have to.
That answers our question.
And I want to apologize publicly for calling at 4:40 in the morning the other day. Usually I don't call until about 5:30 or so, but...
The kids didn't mind.
Pardon me?
The kids didn't mind.
They didn't mind?
They probably didn't hear it.
Okay, good. Well, the, I got a phone call at 4 o'clock from one of my colleagues from the west, from Martin County West, and so we started the phone tree already, we called the TV stations and the radio stations, and, and I went ahead and just decided to fire off the voicemail at 4:40. I had a few comments that maybe that was kind of early, but...
That's really early.
But at least people knew in advance what to do.
Not for syllabus.
Yeah, I was gonna say, not for everybody.
You were up? Okay, good, all right, good, thanks.
All right, anything else? All right, I entertain a motion to adjourn. I move to adjourn. Thank you, Nicole, is there a second?
Second.
All right, Julie. So I have a motion by Nicole, second by Julie, to approve adjourned the school board meeting at 6:06 PM. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries, thank you, everyone.